Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Marion City Council meeting Monday, April 8th, 2024. If you'd please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Please show all council members present for today's meeting. First up, we have the approval of the minutes from the March 6th, 2024, March 11th, 2024, regular meetings, and the March 27th, 2024 budget workshop. I am looking for a motion in regards to those.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Looking for a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries. Next up, we have council member's statement regarding conflicts of interest on agenda items. Any statements from council members?
No.
Hearing none. Proceeding down to resolution ordinances and agreements. First up, we have the introduction of ordinance 01-2024 fiscal year 2024-2025 operating budget. I'm looking for a motion in regards to that.
I move to introduce the operating budget.
Look, looking for a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries. Next up, we have introduction of ordinance 02-2024 fiscal year 2024-2025 water and sewer rate. Looking for a motion in regards to that?
Make a motion to approve the water and sewer rates as presented.
Looking for a second?
I will second.
Any further discussion, comments, concerns? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries. Next up, we have introduction ordinance 03-2024 fiscal year 2024-2025 tax rate. Looking for a motion in regards to that?
Motion to introduce the 2024-25 tax rate.
Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries. Next up, we have adoption of resolution 2024-06 water allocation for April. Looking for a motion in regards to that?
Motion to approve the water allocation for April.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any further questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries. City manager report. Jim, you got something for us?
Yeah, just a quick update from Wednesday night. You guys were asking about the credit card payments for water and sewer billing, and as soon as the file opens. So Barry went back, did a little digging, and we had 912 transactions in the first quarter of this year that were credit card transactions. Let's see, total number of bills was 3,365. So it looks like 27% are paying by credit card of those. And we see this pretty frequently when, when accounts are past due, especially on cutoff day, we only take cash or money orders. So we see a spike in credit card use then, I think, as well. But of the credit card payments, get it in front of me again. 16% are on time. So of that 27%, only 16% are people that are paying in advance of the due date. So we see, we see people.
So not 16, not 16 of the 27, right?
No, right, right. Total 16%.
Okay, so the other 9% are paying late.
Right, right.
Well, then that makes sense if you're avoiding the penalty by paying a small fee, then it's probably worthwhile, if that's the main use for it.
And that would equate to roughly $30,000 a year that if the city were to subsidize that, and you know, so that would be.
Yeah, much higher than I thought it was going to be.
Enough that we would be, you know, that's a noticeable revenue drop that, you know, I don't know. We didn't go so far as to see if that would mean like, you know, a couple pennies more per 1,000 gallons or not. But the assumption was there wasn't any appetite to raise rates to be able to allow people to pay with credit card and absorb the 3% ourselves.
Right. You'd also see an increase in usage of it.
Right. And if there wasn't that, right, that 3% discouraging some folks, I'm sure we would see many, many more transactions. So that 30,000 would likely increase if it weren't for the 3%. So. But just wanted to get back to you with that. Otherwise, unless there are questions, I don't have anything since Wednesday.
Questions, comments, concerns from council? Hearing none. Proceeding forward. Was there any changes for department reports? Sounds good. Legal report, Jay. Anything?
Good evening, everybody. Just an update from last week. The AVACO Board of Zoning Kills hearing is going to be held in May, so that will be for their off.
Jay, having a, having a bit of a hard time hearing you, Jay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, that's, that's a little bit better.
So the AVACO hearing for their offsite parking is going to be held in May. That's as soon as all the parties can get it done, but that will resolve that. The Public Information Acts that I gave you last week that are still outstanding, we have a meeting set with the team on Thursday this week, so we're going to put those to bed. And the title work for the longstanding Fairview Avenue storm drain matter is going to be done, and hopefully that matter will be back to the property owners by the end of this week. So we've made a lot of progress this Wednesday.
Sounds good. Thank you, Jay. Was there anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Questions, comments, concerns from council for Jay? Hearing none. Proceeding down. New business monthly financial report. I'm looking for a motion in regards to that.
Motion to approve.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Further comments, questions, discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries. Next up, we have accounts payables. Looking for a motion in regards to that?
I move to approve the accounts payable.
Looking for a second?
I will second.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries. Next up, we have Department of Public Works Building Step Two. This would be looking for a motion for approval on the agreement.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roger that.
Again, this is the, the step two process.
This is just the agreement for the design.
The design process only, not for the construction.
For, for the comments, questions, concerns by council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries. Approval of contract addendum number three, Eckers Lawn Service LLC. Looking for a motion for approval on that agreement?
Motion to approve.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Further comments, questions, concerns by council? All those, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries. Next up, we have approval of fence installation agreement at Bolinger Park and Perry Property. Looking for a motion on that?
Move to approve that.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Further comments, questions, concerns by council?
Just for, to clarify, it's at the city's expense this fence will be constructed, or is it the Perry's expense this fence will be constructed?
If I remember correctly, we agreed.
It's at our expense.
Our expense.
Correct.
But maintenance is on the Perry's?
Correct. Yes.
Any further comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries. Next up, we have public works agreement for AVACO, third amended site plan. Do you want a motion for approval on that, Jim, right?
Correct. Yes.
Make a motion.
Roger that. Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
Further comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Carries. Council member reports, starting with council member Tillman.
Let's see, the planning commission, we, we heard, let me try, being heard, let's see, we heard from Pat Small about his plan to put a new building where those old buildings are. They're at Roberts Mill, and replaces aging and decrepit buildings, and that's, that was approved for the site plan waiver. Tony View Minor Subdivision, that was also approved for the minor subdivision. And then Tontytown Elementary School, they are going to be doing an addition, and so they came in with a concept site presentation. So that will be coming back to us for, for further review, but they're going to be adding on to the building for four new classrooms, as I recall, and a store, and a bioretention pond. So those were the, those were the, the big actions that we worked on. During the month, I know the, the city manager and I and the planning director met with consultants to talk about moving forward, another consultant to talk about moving forward with the comprehensive plan update. And I think that conversation was very well. Have we heard back from them with details?
Not yet.
Okay, so we're still waiting to hear back from them with details on that. Other than that, I think that pretty much covers it. I think, I don't think I missed anything. So, you know, we'll be meeting the last, last Monday of every month, so come join us.
Councilmember Chaney?
Okay, so I have the police department report for March. All active officers participated in training during the month of March. They participated in the lethality assessment program, which was an overview and refresher, and they received training on officer safety and procedure in domestic violence response. Sergeant Schultz has completed the training coordinator orientation and is assuming department training coordinator duties, which is awesome. More specialized training, private first class Leaks participated in the patrol rifle operators course. Lieutenant Castalar participated in the command leadership institute, and Haley Engels was certified in national transportation child passenger safety certification, which is awesome. There were 517 dispatched calls for service in the month of March, 98 citations issued, and 311 warnings issued, 16 adult arrests, and seven juvenile arrests. In the March, in the month of March, Corporal Shane Schultz was promoted to the rank of sergeant. Congratulations to Sergeant Schultz on his promotion. In good news, the Tontytown Police Department has registered to take part in this year's National Night Out event, which was a super successful event for our town last year. If anyone would like to sponsor an activity for this event, please reach out to the police department. They appreciate all sponsorships very, very much. The Maryland Law Enforcement Torch Run for Special Olympics will be taking place this year in early June, and the Tontytown Department will be participating in this event. If anyone is interested in purchasing a T-shirt, please contact the department. And a special note, a search and seizure warrant was executed on March 1st by members of the Tontytown Police Department, working in conjunction with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office Pace Team and Crisis Response Team. A suspect was taken into custody who was wanted on numerous outstanding warrants from Harford County, and also was a suspect in an armed robbery that took place earlier in the day on March 1st. During the execution of the search and seizure warrant, controlled dangerous substances were seized along with a firearm. So great work being done by the police department. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Perotan, make your.
Yeah, we had a, I had, I had a meeting with, with Meech last Friday, and he kind of brought me up to date. And I guess the majority of the meeting, we talked about Main Street, and we talked about Brandy's, Brandy Bolinger's presentation, and all in all, I thought that was a very positive presentation. And, and I think the vision that the Main Street is proceeding on is one that is, is one that should be sustained and, sustained and encouraged. I think that the, the idea of, the ideas that were brought forth were, were, all had merit. I think the bottom line, in my observation of this whole thing, is the need to communicate, communicate between the Main Street Committee and staff, and between we as council people and, and the Main Street Committee. The more we know, the more we can be involved, and the more support we can give. We talked about the funding that's coming for vacant business, buildings. We kind of batted around some ideas that, what, what, what facilities could be used, and then we came up with a couple that, that Meech hadn't have thought of, and hopefully be able to pursue those a little bit. I would like to make a few comments about our events on Saturday. The, we had a wonderful grand opening at the Laughing Coffin. I was very, very impressed with the, with the facility, with the inventory, and particularly the amount of people that turned out for that event. That was a good job. And certainly going to be an asset to our downtown. The next event was the opening of the, of the park, and I really was, was kind of overwhelmed. I was very, very pleased with what I saw. Many of you know that I've been an advocate of that park for, since its inception many, many, many years ago, and it's finally good to see it come to fruition. I don't have any criticisms, but some, some suggestions. I, I really was pleased with the display signs. They were, I don't know where we got those, but they're very nice. I did know a couple, notice a couple errors, though, and I, and I didn't thoroughly examine these. But one sign labels the Northern Cardinal as our state bird, which of course it isn't, the Baltimore Oriole is, and another, it happens to be the, the state bird of Virginia. And a little later, we talk about the Dogwood being the state farmer of Virginia, with no mention of the Black Eyed Susan. So I'm just wondering if somebody got their wires crossed. But, and there may be others. I didn't, I didn't edit each sign as I went through there, but they're just, those are just two things that I happened to observe. But the signs are deluxe. I mean, they're really nice. So, but I think we probably need to correct at least those two errors and check and see if there's more. I, I haven't been out there to look them over with a magnifying glass or anything, but just, just a casual observation. I think the park will serve us well for many years, and the only other suggestion I might have is that, you know, folks go out there, they make the loop, and they come home. If, if there were a few picnic tables here and there, it would cause families to come out, maybe spend the afternoon, have a picnic in the, in the woods, or in the meadow, or wherever, and then, and then go home. It would be, I think would, would retain the visitorship a little bit more, rather than just going out and making a walking loop, or, or, or looking at the wildlife. It just, just a suggestion that maybe something we can think about in the futures is adding picnic tables to the, to the, to the area. It's one of the visions I had from the beginning, so just wanted to bring that up. And I guess that's about all I have.
I will, just to touch on that, the picnic tables. I did talk with Lorena at the event, and she is, she's interested in adding picnic tables to the facility, because that's something we talked about, was what to do with that open space.
Oh, yeah?
Right there at the parking lot, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I know it's on her radar as far as getting picnic tables or something to put into that open area.
Oh, all right.
Those would actually make good memorials. If people wanted to donate those and be memorials.
Be nice. Yeah, you could, that's true. We could have sponsors, sponsors for those picnic tables. That would be a good deal. I don't know whether Botech could make them or something like that. I mean, even, even that would be something that we could check out.
That would be a good inquiry to make.
Great idea.
To the Career and Tech Center, and to see if they, if they can build them, give, you know, we can give them some, some kind of specification. That'd be something, obviously, wouldn't want just plain pressure-treated wood ones, because they would be of a limited lifespan, but.
Yeah.
Try to figure out what would be a long-lasting.
Well, that, that's true. But anyway, just my thoughts. I'm very, very happy that the park is in place.
Jim, if you don't mind, if you could just follow up with Lorena on that?
Yep.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes, I'm sorry to have missed Saturday, it sounds like. It was very interesting. I saw the pictures in the paper.
Yeah.
I'm not sure where this originates, maybe with Human Services Program, but there's going to be a resource fair in Tontytown. So I don't know if Meech knows about that on April 18th from 9:00 to 12:00.
Didn't imagine that.
Habitat for Humanity is one of the organizations that will be there. With what used to be Silver Oak Academy, we are continuing to work with Department of Juvenile Services.
What was the date? I'm sorry.
April 18th, from 9:00 to 12:00.
I'm sorry, where is it?
I'm pretty sure at the Lutheran Church.
Okay.
That's correct. Trendy.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Silver Oak Academy, we're still working to transition in students from the Department of Juvenile Services. We don't meet this month, we meet next month. So that's moving along. The Legislative Committee has wrapped up their work in Annapolis, and they're already putting out fielders for legislative requests. I don't know if Tontytown has any, but it's time to get those in. And under legislative, as far as the bills that we supported, the tourism zone bill continues to move along nicely, so that's looking good. And that's all I have.
Just one other thing, and I don't know if this followed under Public Works or where, but it's probably a good time to mention it. Wanted to publicly thank the State Highway Administration for the, the widened, the widened white line striping on the edges of both Frederick, Frederick and York Streets and Baltimore Street. This is something we asked for last year, and they've come through and done that for us, and I wanted to make sure that they got, you know, recognition for it.
I noticed those this morning. Have they been there longer than that?
Hmm, I don't think so. I don't, I don't recall them being there yesterday, so.
I was wondering about that.
I think they did it like last night.
Okay.
But it was, it's good to see. The wider edge lines have been shown to slow traffic. It makes the roadway appear narrower, and they've been known to slow traffic. So I'm glad to see that.
And it's good to see items that we requested.
Also good to see things moving forward. Items that we requested. So a big thank you to the State Highway Administration.
Councilmember Fuller?
Well, as Mayor Perotan mentioned, Bolinger Park is open, and obviously there will be some improvements as time goes, but it is fully accessible to the community. A lot of people have asked. It's located at 3775 Fringer Road. That's where it is. It's open from dawn to dusk. Pets are welcome, but you should be keeping them leashed, as all of our parks are. A dog waste station is provided at the trailhead, along with the trash can, so please utilize those. There is still some silt fencing. This will be removed once that grass has grown enough to be approved by the county set of control people, and we still have some grant reimbursement requests submitted. The Easter egg hunt was held on March 24th and was a huge success with over 200 children in four age groups. They found all 4,000 eggs, we hope.
In a minute and a half?
In a minute and a half.
It does not take long. The filled Easter baskets and flowers were raffled off, and many pictures taken with the Easter bunny. Special thanks to Kenny's for the juice and cookies, Thunderhead Bowl for the gift cards and game passes, Cedar Hedge Farm for the flowers, and especially, obviously, our volunteers without whom these events couldn't happen. Our next event is going to be Earth Day Cleanup on Saturday, April 20th, from 1:00 to 3:00. Everyone is welcome to come help clean up all the parks. Volunteers will be provided with trash bags and a lunch ticket for a free hot dog and drink from the Hot Dog Shack. They will be set up at Memorial Park. So when we're all finished, you just can move over there and get your, your lunch. It's a great opportunity for those who need service hours, and it's nice, and you can get a chance to just wander the parks and take your time and hang out with friends while you're cleaning up trash. The annual fishing derby is set up for Saturday, May 4th, starting at 8:00 a.m. at Roberts Mill Park. It's open to all children under the age of 16, and a fishing license is not required. Registration is free. It opens at 8:00 a.m. There's going to be age groups of five and under, six to eight, nine to 12, and 13 to 15. Every contestant receives a door prize at check-in, and the top three contestants in each age group with the largest fish caught win a rod and reel set. Every contestant receives a free hot dog and a drink at the end of the event. And in addition to the Maryland Department of Natural Resources, we have another sponsor this year, Berserker Lures, which is a local Tontytown business. It's also another opportunity to volunteer, because they need help for measuring fish and assisting the kids. And I think that is it for now. I think I've covered everything.
Thank you. Just check, just Jeff was Easter winner this year.
He was.
Thanks to him for filling in, yes.
Absolutely, yep.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot something again.
Mayor Perotan?
Not directly to do with economic development, but pertains to economic development. This Saturday, the Tontytown Museum Association will be opening for the season.
It's, it's Sunday.
The theme this year is trains. We all got a card in the mail, or in our mailbox, inviting us to attend. I'm saying this particularly to the folks that are in the audience and the folks that are watching live stream. I encourage everybody to come up to the museum and take a look at the impact that the railroad had on Tontytown, and quite frankly, pretty much made it the way you see it today. So that's, will be a very enjoyable day for the whole family. I just wanted to mention that, didn't want to forget.
Thank you, Mayor Perotan. Just correction on that, it's Sunday, not, not Saturday. The 14th on Sunday.
I'm 14th, that's correct. You're right.
Other than that, I have a statement for going into closed session. Let me read the statement, and then I'll ask for a motion.
Presiding Officer's closing statement on this date, April 8th, 2024, at 7:58 p.m. at City Hall. In accordance to the Maryland Open Meetings Act Title 10, Governmental Procedures, Subtitle 5, Meeting Section 3-305B, this meeting will be closed as closed only to discuss the appointment, deployment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction, or any other personal matter that affects one or more specific individuals. The following is a list of the topics to be discussed, and the authority in the Open Meetings Act for having such discussion in a closed session, and the citation of the applicable provisions of the Act 3-305B, I-I-I employee salary increases to discuss specific employee compensation matters. I am looking for a motion to adjourn into closed session.
Looking for a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. We are adjourned into closed session, five-minute recess. Thank you.